Good evening and welcome to the April 18th meeting of the Epping School Board. Would you all please stand and join me in reciting our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and you may be seated. Thank you very much. It's nice to have people at our board meetings. We generally don't get this many, so it's nice to have all new faces. We'd like to start this evening with a guest who asked to speak and that's Mrs. McKenzie. If you'd please come to the mic at this time, we would very much like to hear what you have to say.
Thank you very much. I would actually like to ask permission to speak from that podium so that I don't have my back turned. Good evening, members of the school board and members of the community. My name is Rose McKenzie. My husband Jason and I have two daughters that attend the Epping school system. Giada, who is in sixth grade, and Saretta, who is a freshman. My purpose here tonight is to address our situation over the last two weeks. Although I know members of the community have had their own experiences, I want to be clear that my statement applies to our situation only, as well as what we would like to see come out of it. I would ask each of you tonight to keep three concepts in mind: civility, tolerance, and respect. In my opinion, these concepts are becoming dangerously close to extinction. I'm sure we could all give reasons for this, including but not limited to agenda-driven news stations and social media, both of which promote keyboard courage and the mob mentality. No matter what the reasons are though, it is a disease that is slowly destroying communities across our nation and now it's hit our community. As part of Spirit Month at the high school, April 8th was America Monday. My daughter's Trump shirt was brought to Principal Ernest's attention as a concern. In an effort to prevent Saretta from any harassment, he asked her to cover her shirt. We have known Mr. Ernest for four years now. We've grown very close to him and we've always found him to be extremely polite and easy to work with. I understand that although not the way I would have preferred it to be handled, his intent was pure. He was trying to protect my daughter. He has sincerely apologized to us, as well as to the community, for the decision he made that day. We have accepted his apology and I would ask that the community does as well. He made a mistake, as I'm sure we all have in the past. He has since taken ownership and accountability for his actions. I would propose that a principal who looks to protect our children from harassment and one that accepts responsibility for his actions is exactly the type of principal that this community wants in our school system. So that's it. That's the why. The larger and perhaps the more important question that we should all be examining is why? Why was her shirt an issue? Why was Mr. Ernest concerned that she would be harassed? Over the last week or so, I have been appalled at some of the comments that I've read and/or heard. I've literally watched as adults have called each other bigots and snowflakes. Why? Because we have different opinions? I've seen everything from "you go girl" to calling for harsh discipline of Mr. Ernest. Some people have even taken it upon themselves to sit in judgment of Jason and I. For how dare we allow Saretta to support the President of the United States? And how dare we speak to the media? Jason and I have conservative beliefs. Yes, that is true. This does not automatically make us or any other conservative a racist, a misogynist, a Nazi, a xenophobe, or a homophobe. If you ask Saretta why she supports President Trump, she could give reasons, solid reasons. Perhaps the first one is because frankly, when you're on a plane, you support the pilot. Regarding the media, we had one of two choices. We could do our best to control the message that was going out, or we could let the rumors fly. Either way, the media was going to be involved in this. So what do we do now? Does taking America Day away teach tolerance? Is a stricter dress code policy going to promote respect? Is removing all politics from school going to promote civility? No, they're not. Those are all Band-Aids. This is our opportunity as a community to initiate change and set an example. No one should be afraid to show their support for the duly-elected president, but the fact is, many are. Hopefully through the media coverage and through people talking, other schools and campuses can learn from us. I'm told that the district is performing a climate and culture survey so that areas of improvement can be identified. Please get involved. In addition, Saretta and I will be attending a diversity training with other students and members of the faculty. We hope to obtain some tools that encourage difficult but healthy, respectful conversations in the classroom. In addition, we would like to see an initiative where nonpartisan politics are being taught. It is imperative that all of our kids can assess where they are on the political spectrum and make informed decisions on who they are voting for. In closing, I grew up during a time when we were taught both at home and in school that even if you didn't like the person, the office of the President of the United States was to be respected. Tolerance of opinions different from our own were one of the many things that made America the greatest place on earth to live. We were encouraged to treat each other with civility, even when debating the most sensitive subjects. I'm asking everyone in this room tonight to give that some thought because somewhere along the line, those messages have gotten lost, both on adults and kids. For if they hadn't, I wouldn't be standing before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. And now I'd like to have Valerie McKinney, our superintendent, share a few words with you.
Good evening. Kind of a bit of a tough act to follow. My name is Valerie McKinney. I'm very proud to be the superintendent in the Epping community and for the Epping school district. Tonight, I want to start out by offering a public apology to the student and the family for the incident that took place at Epping High School on Monday, April 8th, 2019. Principal Ernest and I met with the student and her mother on Friday, April 12th, as a part of the investigative procedure. Privately, apologies were given and apologies were accepted. However, as the superintendent of the Epping school district, I want each and every one of you to know that from the bottom of my heart, I am truly sorry. I'd also like to extend a public apology to all children and staff who work and come to school in the Epping school district. I'd also like to extend a public apology to the Epping community. This incident caused a tsunami that impacted the school community and the community and even the state and the country. Who would have thought? This was disruptive to our school. Everybody who came felt nervous and anxious. We all received all kinds of difficult mail. All of this put a bad light on what I consider to be an awesome Epping school district, an awesome New Hampshire community. With regards to the principal, appropriate action has been decided and implemented. That's all that I would be saying tonight about that. For those people, citizens of the world, who sent messages, emails, and other types of correspondence, I appreciate your thoughts. I learned a lot. Some stuff I learned was, you know, a little bit not expected, but you know, we're always learning. It's clear to me that people are passionate about their beliefs, one way or the other. Moving forward, I will be working with students and families, parents and teachers, to decide what Epping needs to create in terms of policy and practice to ensure that an incident of this nature will never ever again happen in the Epping community. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Brooks, the proud chairperson of the Epping school board. And I have been afforded this evening an opportunity to speak on behalf of the entire school board. The purpose of this public forum is to provide the Epping citizens with the opportunity to speak in public related to the incident that occurred on April 8th, 2009 at the Epping High School. It's important for each and every one of you to understand that there is a huge difference between the laws that regulate employment in the public sector as opposed to the laws related to the employment in the private sector. School employment falls within the public sector and there are employment laws that govern what we can discuss relative to internal personnel matters. So please don't interpret the silence of our school board members as something they would like to do, but instead, we are trying to abide by the laws that govern school employment. The superintendent has made a recommendation to the Epping school board regarding this personnel issue. However, we are not at liberty to reveal this to the public at this time. We do recognize that not all people will be pleased with the final decision. However, we will stay within the confines of the employment law in order to protect our taxpayers. With that said, I will open the public forum and allow those who wish to speak, but I would like to first announce the rules of engagement for this evening. We have distributed on several chairs our policy BEDH, which is Public Participation at School Board Meetings. Because this is one of our normal bimonthly meetings, we must put a time limit on our public comments section so that we can continue our necessary and complete our necessary business. Therefore, each person will be afforded the opportunity to speak once for a period of three minutes, and I bought a little egg timer today so I could time the three minutes. This ought to be interesting. And when the bell goes off, it'll indicate that you've used your three minutes. And then when you hear that, would you please make your closing remark and allow the next person to speak? When you speak, please state your name and address clearly for our secretary. Epping residents will be given preference to speak first. All speakers are asked to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Plead, obscene, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. Please do not use this forum as a political platform. As the board chairperson, I may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow these rules. All questions and comments should be addressed to me as the chairperson and please no calling out. That will not be tolerated. We would like to hear from as many different people and points of view as possible. So if someone has already made the same point that you were planning to make, please allow someone to speak that has a new or a different point of view. We've allotted 60 minutes for public comments. So at approximately 8:15, 16, we'll end public comments. We'll take a 10-minute break and then our normal agenda will resume in this room. So, thank you in advance for your cooperation. And who would like to be our first speaker?
I'm Sammy Craig. I live at 64 Road in Epping, 679-512-FL. All three of my grandchildren graduated from Epping High and I am so blessed that they all decided to settle in Epping and raise their families here. Two of my grandchildren have graduated from Epping and I have two grand still in the system. As an Epping resident, taxpayer, and grandmother, I was horrified and embarrassed by the front-page article in the Union Leader on the 11th about the t-shirt issue. I read the complete article and my immediate issue was the Superintendent McKinney's reaction. She declined to comment. Why? She is the leader of the Epping schools. Why would she decline to comment? Our vice chairman of the board, Dave Mayorkas, stepped up to the plate and to speak with his personal opinion, not a board opinion. And our superintendent declined to comment. What are we paying her large salary for if not to represent our town? Declined to comment? That's not what I want to pay for. Since her inability to investigate in a timely manner, this issue was front-page news and all the local New England newspapers made all the local television in England news broadcasts, even the national news broadcast and international news. It was on the BBC in England. This incident happened on a Monday and was still being investigated by our superintendent on Thursday. I found out tonight it was still being done on Friday. I watch all the school board meetings and it seems to me Superintendent McKinney is more interested in changing the grading system with her name as a funding person for the state. I feel we're being used as guinea pigs. The students and parents have come to meetings in the past and no fixes have been answered in public. That aside, the Trump t-shirt issue and McKinney's decline to comment shows me a complete inability to perform her job. This is the straw that broke the camel's back. I would like the school board to immediately evaluate Superintendent McKinney and her job performance for this district as I think she is a detriment to our schools. And I would like you to hire a person who thinks more of Epping and her students first rather than herself. If this is not the proper place for me to make this request, would you please send me to where I can make it? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sean Morris, 98 Hamilton Drive, State Representative for Aaron. I have two nine-year-olds in SSAU. I'd like to start off by saying that I met with Principal Ernest and that I believe he undoubtedly had the best interest of his student in mind when he admitted the regretful decision. There have been many parents who spoke lowly of Principal Ernest. I've heard many, many stories where he's gone over and above his duties as a principal for families in Epping. He has made an apology and I believe that this will suffice in regards to this one and two. I would like to echo some sentiment that I've heard, however, regarding the overall environment in this SAU. I believe that there is an atmosphere where many of us parents do not feel we are being listened to or treated respectfully. I could cite a roomful of parents being told that we are obsessing about our children's grades or other instances that I've read about or experienced myself as a parent. When raising the possibility of a similar issue subsequent to what happened and made national news, you know, I raised an issue about the notation or something that I had seen in the school, I received a scathing email from an administrator as if I was a student. I will say that I'm an employee of another town. I'm a town employee. And I responded in that manner. Or if I responded in the ambulance and told some parent that they were obsessing about their children's health, when I responded as a paramedic, I'd be fired. There's been instances where apparently I'm hearing a lot about bullying in the schools.
Sean, I don't want to cut you off, but the public forum was supposed to be all based on the event of April 8th.
Understood. I will tie it all in.
So there's probably another forum that we could hear you fill.
Okay, sure. I'll tie it all in. My overall point is that I believe that the atmosphere currently in the SAU exacerbated this issue, okay? I think if parents felt that they were being listened to on other issues, it wouldn't have been as big a deal. That's my overall thought. I would like to also point out that I am in no way referring to any teacher in my remarks. Again, over 300 signatures on one issue, not being dealt with correctly or in a timely manner. We still don't know what the answer to that other issue is. It leads to the atmosphere that we currently have. Everybody here pays 81 cents a dollar, every property tax dollar to this SAU. And again, we don't feel we're being listened to in a timely manner on many of these issues. This ties into as many other issues. I would like to say I owe an apology to one school board member who inadvertently got caught up in a lack of trust from parents, town employees, and the administration here. So I apologize to you. The issue at hand, the behavior of the Department of Education as code of ethics for educators. I will email this. I have emailed this to every one of you. Principal 3 reads as follows: "The educator acts in the best interest of all students by advocating for equitable educational opportunities in endeavoring to present facts with fidelity to the content and without distortion, bias, or personal prejudice." It also states that educators will communicate with parents and guardians in a respectful manner which represents students' best interests. I don't believe that happened or is happening in every case here in town. My request of the school board and of the SAU is to work collaboratively to turn this potential negative regarding this incident into a positive by leading the way in this state and endorsing a proposal that would add the words "political bias" to this code of ethics, Principal 3. I would also suggest that perhaps no political slogans be allowed in any of our schools. But I have emailed all of you and I'm obviously open to any language that anybody feels they'd like to contribute. I will be bringing this to the State Board of Education. And in closing, I would also like to request a written decision by the school board on the changes in the direction of our grading system so that parents can appeal to any decisions that were made by the school board if we are not satisfied. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nancy Kindler. I live on 31 Old State Road here in town. I've been here over 20 years. I'm not going to read something I wrote, but it was written by the founder of the Patriot Initiative, Josh Moore. He is a very patriotic, conservative, constitution-minded young man and he is really doing the best he can for the state of New Hampshire to try to get all the young people to learn more about the Constitution. These are Josh's words. Dear members of the board, the Patriot Initiative is disappointed, but not shocked, by the recent decision made by Principal Ernest. The First Amendment is inscribed within the U.S. Constitution and ensures that every citizen of America has the right to express his or her right to free speech, which includes wearing clothing and supporting a public figure. The comments of Principal Ernest, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. Is it Ernest? Are quite confusing as he believes this issue relates to the topic of separation of church and state. We must point out the fact that nowhere in any founding-era document can the phrase "separation of church and state" be found. This is a common misconception that has been entrenched into our culture and politics and it needs to be addressed and corrected. The Constitution recognizes the right of every citizen to freely practice his or her religious beliefs and prevents the government from interfering with that practice. If Principal Ernest believes that church and state is an issue here, then it is he who is in violation of it, not the students, as Mr. Ernest is representative of the state within the position he holds. How is it that the school can determine what is patriotic or not? "It sounds like this girl wore a shirt with faith and got in trouble because of the intent which was misrepresented." That was said by Virginia Dry. There is a culture war with students who believe that the principles found within the Constitution and on those who disagree with the idea of socialism or any other totalitarian ideology. These socialists and totalitarian ideals must be challenged by the youth of America and we believe that Ms. McKenzie has bravely done just that. We encourage and support other students to follow the lead of Ms. McKenzie and express their patriotism in the same or similar manner. And just quickly, the words from me. I have four children with spouses and eight grandchildren. I have several of my grandchildren graduated from college and one going on for her masters. One is at George Washington University and I could go on and on. I'm a proud grandma. I've watched my kids and my grandchildren grow up and my children didn't have to go through what my grandchildren went through and I saw a lot going on in the schools from kindergarten through high school, which shocked the heck out of them. When you can't even put red or green in the school or you have to have only blue and white or frosting or you cannot wear costumes for Halloween because you might offend somebody. And all of a sudden, the parents made a stink. And I won't say what town this was in in New Hampshire. But because the parents made a stink out of it, they allowed them to wear costumes as long as they messed up as an animal. Well, I have to say, we've gotten pretty much out of hand. I'm not going to talk much longer. I want to leave room for other people. And I am so proud of Ms. McKenzie, so very proud.
Are there any other Epping residents who would like to speak?
Robert Hodgman, I'm in New Hampshire. I gotta move this mic so I can see. Let me start by saying that I'm wearing the same outfit that my son wore on the same Monday, April 8th, and nothing happened to him. And that's good. I don't have any issues with anything to the person. I think we're all fallible individuals. In the spirit of learning more, there are some other aspects of this issue that should be addressed. If there were students giving Saretta a hard time about her shirt, I would first say shame on him. We're in a time where people that don't support Trump are telling people that do support Trump to follow them. Your opinions are violence. Disagreeing with me is assault. For my safety, you must not be a bad person. You must pay. If we go along with this and concede to these types of demands, it is all over. If we let them define speech as violence, the First Amendment has no meaning. They can tell you what to say and what to say, like in China. This is scary. We should be afraid. Two, there is a story out there that the next day a teacher asks a student or students, it's unclear, to write an essay explaining why it was a good thing that Saretta was asked to cover her Trump shirt. As a student, I would turn in a blank sheet of paper and expect it a A or an E. I think we should investigate this. From one teacher, myself, to another teacher, whoever it may be, I would suggest that a more appropriate question would be, which of the Bill of Rights did the request violate? A follow-up question which might be, which of the Bill of Rights have been and/or are currently being violated by people in our country? and/or are currently being violated by people in our country and/or our government, namely progressives? Provide examples, we'll bate it to at least two different Bill of Rights. In case you don't know, essentially, every one of our rights are currently under assault thanks to Woodrow Wilson and others like him that follow. Three, contrary to anyone's opinion that President Trump is a controversial president, he is in fact not a controversial president. He is simply a victim of fake outrage triggered by irrational thoughts and irrational behaviors by those that don't like him, including sore builders. Remember, Trump was very popular before he even announced that he was running president. Those same people who paid him loved him. There's actually a lot of picture evidence to prove that. These people are addicted to outrage and silly narratives. If you were born before March fourth, nineteen twenty-nine, the best president of your lifetime is Calvin Coolidge, and I'm seriously jealous of you. For the rest of us that are not at least ninety years old, one month and fourteen days old, Donald Trump is easily in the top three presidents since Coolidge. If you put those accomplishments on paper, it would be difficult not to put him in the number one slot. In closing, I'd like to make some recommendations. That we require a Constitution course, ideally... Ideally, we would, we would take advantage of Hillsdale College, who has Constitution, Federalist Papers, Declaration of Independence, Bill of Rights, courses online. I would say, I would suggest, use that as free and outstanding material. You can also look at my son's going as an Ashbrook scholar, I believe they have some programs too. We as students, parents, families, we have a love affair. A love affair with common sense, a love affair with the Constitution, a love affair with the Bill of Rights, a love affair with the Declaration of Independence, a love affair with the Federalist Papers, a love affair with our country, and a love affair with liberty. We're losing our country, folks. One more recommendation, students, someone step up, someone start a liberty group or a Young Americans for Freedom, or a Constitution Club, something. All volunteers and adults, I'm sure some others would too, to support that. It doesn't even have to go to the school. It's a place to be and learn together. Last, students, if you've got a Trump shirt or shirts, wear one every week. If you've got enough, wear them every day. Wear it loud and wear it proudly.
Hi, I'm Andrea Meyer, living on Foxridge Road in Epping.
Andrea, for me, I didn't know you did this for that. Folks, this is not working in Epping.
Absolutely.
So Ben, you said you have one on, he's technologically astute, I'm not, and he has one on his phone, but I tried this all day, all afternoon, and it worked fine, so I apologize.
I'm a mom, I don't...
Oh, hey Andrea, I'm sorry.
No problem. So mine is really more not involving politics. It's regarding, this is an opportunity to work, well, about the students, absolutely. It's really about the opportunity to be consistent. I was a former human resources director, I'm now a computer teacher, and I know, unfortunately, it's great to have policies and procedures, but if they're not consistently being upheld and being done, then they're not valid. They don't, you go to court, it's not considered valid, they'll tell you right flat out. If you have a policy you're writing, it's as good as that piece of paper if your practice is not doing that. I received a call, I called my son at the end of the day, how was your day? Because I was at work, and he said, well, I was told to take my hat off when I go, and you're not supposed to wear a hat. He goes, well, it was Spirit Week, everyone was wearing a hat. Mr. Ernest told me at lunch to take my hat off, and I said, well, you best have taken it off. He said, of course I did, but when I walked into the bandroom, Mr. Marr was on the phone with Mr. Ernest, and Mr. Ernest was questioning whether he kept his hat off. I'm sorry, you know, here's, you know, I don't know Mama Bear, but my son has never not been respectful. And so he handed his hat to Mr. Marr and said, hold on to it, because I don't want anyone to think that I'm not following the rules of what an administrator or a teacher or any adult shared with me. But the sad part is, he walked into his next class, and not only were there students wearing hats, there were teachers wearing hats, because it was America Day, it was Spirit Month. I mean, it's been crazy. My kids have gone to school in pajamas and this and that, and they're having a blast, and it's great to add to the excitement about being a part of a community. But you need to be clear about the policies, and you need to ensure that every single person... I will be very honest, my son didn't want me to say anything. He feels he's already being persecuted because he has spoken up many times about the competency-based rating, and that saddens me, because all of our kids have a wonderful voice, and they're doing a great job. And I just say, this is a great opportunity to add better training, better awareness, and be more consistent with policies, because the jobs of these administrative staff are a tough one, and I know that because I've been in these situations. But if we aren't consistent, we've done injustice to everyone. So thank you.
Carrie Snyder, forty-two-year-old girl. I just wanted to show a little bit of a different point of view. Mr. Ernest, I think, is a fantastic principal, probably one of the better ones that we've had, and I think, and I think that some people don't know him very well. I was actually on the committee that hired him, and I was on the school board and worked with him. And he's a fantastic stand-up guy that made a mistake that I think he regrets, but I also think that you guys don't see him every day, and how he inspires and encourages kids, and how he fiercely defended our students when there was a tragedy, something tragic happened at the school and the media was here. He was the first to run outside and get the media out of here to protect our kids. And some of you do not see him. And I just, I had to come up here because I hate to see him just get bashed and bashed and bashed for one mistake that he clearly has owned, and he has sent in an apology, and I believe it to be wholeheartedly sincere. And I'd hate to chase somebody out of this town for one mistake, and it would be a huge loss for us and our students, and if you talk to our students, you would find out how well-loved he is in this town as an administrator. And I can see kids nodding their heads, and maybe not everybody loves him, but a lot of kids do, and he's very passionate, and he always puts students first. And he did make a mistake, I believe that as well, but the climate, the political climate, the last election was a very scary time and place in this school. I know my kids went to school saying they didn't dare say what their political views were because they were threats, and I think that was maybe why he wanted to be politics. I'm just saying, there could be, you guys don't see the everyday inside of the school, what happens and how passionate some of the kids are, and that might be where it stemmed from, was the two thousand sixteen campaign. But I just wanted to give that point of view and just to say that I think Mr. Ernest is a stand-up guy, and if you don't know him, please be open to knowing that people do make mistakes, and he's owned it.
Lady Miss Dennis, twenty-nine-year-old girl, I have Epping. I just wanted to take a moment and kind of recognize, at least for myself, how impressed I am and how proud I am right now of our community. I don't know what anybody else thought they were coming into tonight, but I expected it to be contentious, I expected it to be anger-fueled, and I want to thank especially Mrs. McKenzie for opening with a tone that really set all of us together as community and peers, and people who want the same things. We want the same things for our children, we want the same things for our community. We will not always agree on everything, but what I would personally love to see, and I'm sure I'm not alone, is for us to take this tone that we have right here tonight and bring it with us on our technology, on our social media. We're great right now, but can we be great in twelve hours whenever everybody jumps on whatever our social media, and we all know what it is? Can we maintain this? Can we remember that we're a community? And right now, we're being seen by the world, we're being looked at, and we have an opportunity to give example of a place where people can disagree and come together and have conversations. We do not all agree in here about anything, but we're being watched and looked at, and we can set the tone, and we can say, here we are, this small New Hampshire community that has the opportunity to show anybody else out there that we can disagree about politics and still be a community, and still care for one another, and still be there for one another in spite of all of this. And I just hope that we can do that, and I hope that we can take it out of here tonight and remember that we're neighbors, and we're friends, and we're parents, and we're educators, and we're students, and we all have the same ultimate goals here. I have never been so proud of this community as I can tell you. Well, I've been proud other times, but I've never been so unexpectedly proud as I am right now of who we are at this moment. So, thank you.
Are there any other Epping residents who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Leslie Davis, sixteen in Hatchport. I'm Rose's neighbor, and I just wanted to say to all of you that Rose put a lot of thought into her presentation tonight. Not all of us always agree on what side of the aisle that we're on, but most importantly, what I want to say is she being here, her point tonight being that we are not going against the principal, nor the educators. And I, for one, am very, very happy with the educators, the principals, and the support that my son, a nine-year-old, has received. And I just want to make sure that hopefully, and may it stay, that Rose's whole purpose here tonight was not to talk about a political issue, but to talk about a child's rights, a child's right to creativity, to express themselves, but also to support the educators. I think she started off with that comment, and I think we need to leave with that comment tonight, and that's all I can say.
Any other Epping residents that would like to speak? Are there any other individuals in this group that would like to speak?
Better chair, school board, and superintendent, but a record representative, Al Waldosaw from London Derry. I was Donald Trump's National Veterans Chairman, traveled around the country with President. But that's not what I'm here about. I'm here about, I'm very impressed, I want to shake your principal, Ian. As a retired Marine, he leadered, knew he was going to stand up, make a mistake, and apologize. I was impressed what I read about your principal. But I was also impressed that I, that Ms. McKenzie was standing up for her rights. At the State House, I'm a constitutionalist, I'm a bipartisan guy, and I'm a liberty guy. I believe in freedom of speech. I ask, I meet every kid's class that comes up to the State House, I'm a seven-term state representative. I ask and honor about the U.S. Constitution. Very few come up and know about the New Hampshire Constitution. Now, I ask these questions here because freedom of speech is very important. That young lady is an example for the country to stand up for her rights. And the retired Marine who went to war and who sent the son to war, many of my fellow veterans died protecting our freedom of speech. I heard that you were going to do some type of fancy diversity training. That's beautiful. Whatever happened with going after the bullies? Whatever happened to talking to people and saying, you stand up for your rights, we agree to disagree? Teach unity, how did we disagree? I've been on both sides of the House. I grew up with grandfather, Porcher Mayor, Cambridge, Massachusetts, Tip O'Neill, Ghetto. What I'm saying is, I know both sides. We've worked together, I've been in the White House with President Obama, shook his hand. I disagreed with his policies, but I respected the office. So you all set the example here, and I think people around the country, got a little bit off-target on what actually went on, because your principal had a temporary setback, and the solution was apologizing. So I have to compliment you all for what you did, and I'm proud to be a part of it here in New Hampshire. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. My name is Representative Max Abramson. I served with Al up in the State House, and I just have one quick comment, and that is that the state laws and state constitution and federal constitution are very clear that school districts are not supposed to be used to promote politics, whether it's left-wing or right-wing or anything else. However, the state and federal constitutions both protect freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and our other constitutional rights, and the students, in my opinion, have the right to express whatever ideas that they, that they want to, to question and challenge our ideas and our old conventional wisdom. Almost everything that I was taught in kindergarten about history and dinosaurs and everything else, the assumptions that the previous generation had made, had all been, have all been pretty well disproven since then. They used to tell us that dinosaurs were cold-blooded reptiles, and that they were no relation to birds, and I'd already read as a kid articles that were totally contrary to that, and I remember getting yelled at by a very angry public school teacher who insisted, because she was brought up on a, on a different way of thinking about dinosaurs. And so my main viewpoint on schools has always been that the kids are supposed to question things, they're supposed to question our, our old outdated assumptions, and that they're supposed to think for themselves and speak out. When we speak in committee on issues, I was just at the State House today, most of the members are, are very careful to just stick to the point, and most of us speaking in committee, you wouldn't know if someone was a Republican, a Democrat, a Libertarian, or an Independent, that they're just members who they're, they're there to do the job and represent the public the best we can. The other point I wanted to make is, I, I heard about the issue of harassment, and this is a, it's a nationwide problem, it isn't a problem limited to one district. There are a hundred and fifty thousand violent acts against teachers and students in the public schools everywhere, and I'm glad that we have more and more emergency responders available at the school or near the school, are, are getting to the schools more quickly. Today, the security is taking a greater precedent, but a lot of kids have, have mentioned these two concerns more and more when I talk to them, when I go door-to-door, when I go campaigning. The kids who are there with the parents can say, you know, that there's more and more politics being pushed to the schools, but they're also concerned about the safety issues. And I believe that we as adults have to step up and take responsibility for those two issues. Thank you.
Good evening, members of this Epping Board of Education.
Could you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Ann Marie Banfield. I am not a, an Epping resident, I am a Hampton resident. However, I would like to thank you for opening this up to non-Epping residents. Just want to note, though, that we do pay state and federal taxes for this school, so I appreciate you hearing my voice tonight. My focus is on, as a parental, I am a parental rights advocate in the state, I focus on literacy and academic excellence. I know several of the representatives, because they seat me up in Concord all the time fighting for parental rights and literacy and academic excellence. So after hearing about the news about a student in Epping who was told to cover up her Great America, Make America Great Again shirt on a date that was chosen to honor America, I wanted to come here to ask you to thoughtfully consider a few things before going forward with any reforms, any reforms. My first concern was over the lack of knowledge shown by a school administrator when it comes to our First Amendment rights. I think this may expose an even bigger problem within the school. If the principal of the high school does not fully understand our constitutional rights and work to uphold them, this may expose a bigger problem within the district. What do the students learn while attending school in Epping in the subject area of What do the students learn while attending school in Epi in the subject area of civics? This is where I hope you will target your efforts as you go forward. This act alone has put the district in a vulnerable position if this student would decide to file a lawsuit. Other students who've been put in the same position have won their court cases, putting residents in a position of having to pay out a large sum of money. WMUR reported that, he gave me a speech, this is what the student said, he gave me a speech saying how we can't make church and state within the school. And also, after I covered up, because I was kind of ashamed, kids who don't support Trump, some of them were like, you get what you deserve. There is no provision in the US Constitution requiring the separation of church and state. In fact, every state required a belief in God in order to hold public office in the original state constitutions. How many know that? How many students know that? Why would a statement even enter into discussion over a political T-shirt? What if the student had been wearing a shirt with a religious message on it? And this brings me to my point about the importance of literacy in the course of academic subjects like civics education. Too often here, seeing schools put more and more emphasis on action versus academic content knowledge. We've seen it all over New Hampshire. There was a Manchester School Board meeting. I'm sorry.
Almost at time.
Okay. According to the 2018 Annenberg Constitution Day Civics Survey, only 32% of Americans can name three branches of government. There's more, but I'm gonna have to cut this short. This is an opportunity for me to analyze what is being taught and not taught in the school district. Exercising our voice, voting, and other action items are worthwhile efforts, but their time in school needs to be focused on civics knowledge. So they exercise those actions, and when they do, they are informed, literate, and knowledgeable citizens. I'm almost done. We live in an exceptional country, and it is good to see the district recognizing the importance of American exceptionalism. But it is not enough to celebrate America or even teach them how a bill becomes a law. Students and administrators need to know about their rights as Americans. They need to know the history behind the constitutional protections and personal freedom that makes America exceptional. Civics is more than an action item. It is about understanding our rights and personal freedom, where that came from. Taking your time and focus on improving the quality of civics literacy would go a long way in terms of helping your student body, avoiding lawsuits that, and avoiding lawsuits that taxpayers pay. That is all I have to say. And I would like to just say about competency grading, if you want to know more about that, why that's a big problem, please see me afterward. I will.
Hi there. I'm Ed Preevy. I'm Franklin, New Hampshire. So I traveled an hour and 20 minutes to get here tonight. Because I believe in our First Amendment, our Second Amendment. You guys got a tough job in front of you. It's not easy, especially in this climate today. School administrators, teachers, they're under the gun all over the place. This is the reason why my son, my little boy, Noah, went on a second tour to protect that you guys would be safe, and he was wounded. Now, when you get that phone call, you take notice. I've never believed in a movie. I'm gonna teach your daughter. That's just got a picture of an elephant. That's why I'm late in the movie. Now, that's freedom of speech. But thank you for letting me speak, because I don't live here. I've been through your town many a times. I compliment you and the group behind me. What a great civics lesson for young people to see how adults can respect each other. So far, nobody's screaming, yelling, or calling. We got cameras all over the place over here, NPR out there listening. And people will, a couple weeks from now, a month from now, will all be forgotten. But the student won't be forgotten. You folks won't be forgotten, because you're gonna have to deal with it day to day. And that takes courage and strength. Now, I come from a community where the city council and the school board, one's an earth sign, one's a water sign. They mean mud. That said, and I'll get, I'll get, when I get back to Franklin, I'll say, why didn't you say that? Because it's true. Get together. Remember, that young person, that's your future we're messing with. If we don't take care of them, all of them, shame on us. Because they're our future. When we're old and gray and sitting in that rocking chair, they are gonna take this country over. They are gonna wanna do what they wanna do. And if we don't teach them now, now, today, shame on us. I go to this, I go to the House, and I go to the Senate, and I talk about young people. Because if I volunteer for the New York County Juvenile Prevention Program, and what I see comes in front of me, here's a young girl who just wore a T-shirt. She probably gets real good grades, I don't know them for a fact, but I have an understanding when I met with her, she probably does. And her parents are probably doing a really great job. Commended for that. Because you always hear about the child that gets in trouble, but never about the good child that just wanted to say something. I will respect you, sir. Thank you very much. And I was in the Marine Corps in 69. Whole lot of bad news going on back then. So, thanks very much. You folks, stay safe. And as I say to my youngest, my little boy, Noah, stay frosty. It means stay alert. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Josh Montaro, 320th Law Group, bragging manager. And I'm a high school student. I'm here to talk about how important it is for high school students to learn and practice their First Amendments. Rights, freedom of speech that doesn't interfere or harm education should never be stopped. The circumstance of a teen wearing a "Make America Great Again" T-shirt mirrors perfectly the landmark court case decision of Tinker v. Versini. In this case, a 13-year-old girl wore a bracelet to protest the Vietnam War. After wearing it to school, immediately upon arrival, the girl was told to take it off or face a school suspension. Her and four others would end up being suspended. Then the students were informed they couldn't come back until they removed the bracelets. This prompted the parents to file a lawsuit. The end result of the lawsuit was, you only shed your First Amendment rights when you enter a school. The fact is that the teen that wore a shirt that said "Make America Great Again" lost her First Amendment right when asked to cover up a T-shirt. That said, "Make America Great Again." Her First Amendment right was taken away. This can never happen again to any student ever again. Regardless of their political beliefs, as a current high school student, I see the impact students can make when their voices are spoken and their beliefs showcased. For example, at Portsmouth High School, a group of sisters went to the school board to ask for our lunch trays not to be styrofoam, which styrofoam, which styrofoam trays could cause immense environmental damage. Their voice, their voice was heard, and now at Portsmouth High School, they have environmentally friendly lunch trays. It doesn't take long for people to see the impacts the teens can make when our voices are heard. So I'm here to say that when a high school student is respectfully displaying their beliefs and opinions, no educator should ever tell a student to cover up or put something over it, because it's an unalienable right to be able to practice our First Amendment right.
I'm not an Epi resident here. I'm from two towns over in Kansas. My name is Dana Buckley, and I'm on the school board in Kansas. So I can kind of relate to a lot of the things, the problems that we deal with as school members. But I gotta tell you, when I first heard the news about what had happened, I thought to myself, what kind of environment are they providing in the schools in Epi? Where a student can go into school and be told that because other students don't like her beliefs, they're gonna harass her and bully her, so the principal, who's supposed to treat all students equally, takes it out on her and takes away her First Amendment rights? There is no law, in common law or statutory law, there's no right in the Constitution that says you have the right not to be offended. There is a right to free speech, though. And it's just so awful that the students aren't treated equally. I can't imagine that happening in my district. I just, I just can't. But, so if you, if you want to take this seriously, you can make all the plans, you can talk about, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. But you know what the real test is? The real test would be, in six months from now, another student comes in, wears a shirt like Ms. McKenzie wore, and she goes, he or she goes home that day, and the parents of that student say, how's school doing? They say, great, I wore my Trump shirt, nobody bullied me or harassed me or intimidated me today. That's when you'll know that you've changed and you're living up to the faith that the people, the voters in this town have entrusted you as school board members. You need to make that change, because this, this is just not acceptable.
I'm gonna be real quick, because I hadn't planned on speaking. I'm Fred Dusset, Representative Dusset from Salem. I served as President Trump's Chairman here in New Hampshire. And I'm just inspired to get up and speak because of some of the things I've heard in the room tonight. And I'm making a challenge to Ms. Martin, Ms. Williamson, and you, to get together. In a, a society that's so linked with social media now, the vitriol, the anger, the personalization of politics, it doesn't belong anymore. I and Al have been all over the country and have experienced this. You, and it's, and it's not rhetoric, you guys are our future. We're counting on you to work together. This, this great state of New Hampshire, the fact that we're all together here talking openly like this about this issue is, is the greatest thing in the world. But you guys need to come together. Unity is not a, not a bad word. It's a real word. It's not a rhetorical word. It's something you have to work towards. We all have to understand, we're all on the same team, we're all Americans, and you're all part of the Epi school family. So, help each other, get along, keep up the good work in this town. Thank you for your time, Ed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the privilege of speaking? I see a gentleman approaching the line.
Ladies and gentlemen, the school board, Madam Chairman, Ms. McKinney, good to see you again. A little intro, Ms. McKinney was actually my middle school principal. My name is Cody Valander. I live in North, I live in Epi on North River Road. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I would strongly say that I do not speak on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. I, as a college student, I go to UNH, probably one of the most prestigious colleges in the state, personally. It doesn't get better. We have to make a move now. I can't go to college and speak my beliefs because I'm afraid of what those who disagree with me are going to respond to. There was a study regarding college students being afraid to pronounce their political beliefs. We need to change this now, not tomorrow, not yesterday, actually, it should have been done yesterday. I want to commend every one of you that is sitting in front of us today for being up here and holding this fort. What a great way that we can move forward, and what a great way for us to practice our First Amendment. This isn't about, this isn't about Republicans or Democrats or Independents. This is about the Constitution of the United States that applies to all residents of the United States. I, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, am speaking on behalf of myself. I'm here to help any way that I possibly can to represent my constituents in the best possible capacity that I can. We have heard a lot from people, and I commend everybody who came out here today. There was no fighting, there was no disrespect, we were all very respectful toward, towards each other. I just, I want to commend everybody for that. So, thank you, Madam Chairman, school board members, McKinney. And thank you to everybody else who came out today. I really appreciate it for you being respectful to our community, because when we have an issue, we come together. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Cody. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? All right, we will take a 10-minute recess. I'm sorry?
I'm gonna come.
What, please? I didn't hear you say a thing. I also want to give board members a moment to say something.
Hello. My name is Rachel Martin. I am a part of the school board. I am a representative, Faith as well is behind me. I'm not speaking on behalf of the school board's perspective, just me as a senior. I have been with Mr. Ernest for five years. He's a wonderful principal, he's the best principal that I've seen in my school system. And I believe, although he had made a mistake, he did not have any ill intention. But I wanted to more talk about the environment in our school, although this was one event that I do not believe this portrays our environment of our school at all. What I feel in my school, I feel loved by the teachers and the administrators. I feel as though, sometimes it is hard for me to speak and say what I would like to. I always feel as though I am behind people that will support me in my school system. So although this was a very sad event that happened, it does not portray the Epi school district very well. And I believe that, as a student, I'm able to speak on to how the environment has affected me, and I love the school system here.
Hi, my name is Faith Williamson. I'm also on the school board, and I'm a junior. I completely agree with what Rachel had said. I respect Mr. Ernest greatly, and I think that although he did make a mistake, I believe that he apologized, and I, I accept his apology, and I think a lot of the students do as well. But I would quickly like to respond to something that I said a few times earlier about how this has been a great opportunity for people to come together and speak regardless of their beliefs. And I agree with that. I think that this has been a great opportunity for people of all, you know, political views or whatever it may be, to come together and speak. But that's not how the situation was handled before this on social media, to speak to what you were saying before. Students had to watch as adults were speaking terrible things about a principal that we respect. We've always been taught that everyone makes mistakes, and if someone apologizes, to always try to give them a second chance. So when Mr. Ernest apologized, most students agreed that he deserves a second chance. And when we were looking on Facebook, we didn't really see that portrayed in our community. So I just ask that following this event and in the future, for everyone to think before they're posting, students are on that page too. And we want to be able to feel like our opinions matter too, and not just what the adults feel. And I think that that's how it kind of felt on social media. So yeah, I just ask that in the future, please be respectful, and this meeting is a great example of how we should be on social media.
The evening. My name is Ben Levitt. As you know, I'm a member of the school board. And I recognize- And I recognize that maybe not everybody is happy with statements that everybody's had to make tonight, but those are the restrictions that we kind of have to live under, but I would like to echo everyone else's statements, that I'm very proud to see everybody to come out here tonight, have a civil discussion. We could all air what was on our mind. We're all gonna take the comments that we've received via email, letters, and your comments tonight, and we're proud of those and the things that we do going forward. So thank you very much for coming, and everything's been duly appreciated and taken, excuse me, taken note of. Thank you very much.
As the Chairman of the Board, I'd like to also echo those comments, because I've always been very proud to say that I'm an Epping resident, and tonight only solidifies that. I think in Epping, when things go wrong, we all come together to try to make them right. I'm thankful for our police department, for our selectmen, for our business administrator of the town, everyone comes out to support each other, and to me, that's very important, a community that's, who lives and works together and has the same goals, especially for our children. It's, it's a wonderful place to live. So thank you very much, and we will take our 10-minute recess and then come back and convene our regular agenda. Thank you again for coming.